Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, July 12, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. At this time, I will turn it over to the clerk to read out the closed session agenda.
Item number one pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation California Sport Fishing Protection Alliance versus Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Sub Basin Sustainability Plan at All, Stanislaus County Superior Court Case Number CV-20-001720. Item number two, Public Employment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1 Title, Intern County Administrative Officer. Item number three pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2 Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Anticipated Litigation One Case Significant Exposure to Litigation. Item number four pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2 Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Anticipated Litigation One Case Significant Exposure to Litigation.
At this time, is there any public comment? Is there any online?
There is no online public comment.
Okay. And she and none in the room? At this time, we will convene into closed session and come back at the regular agenda at nine o'clock. Good morning and welcome back to the Tuesday, July 12, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. If everyone could please stand for the flag.
Quod ludegrant to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, there is nothing to report out of closed session. We will be going back in the closed session after the regular agenda. Next, we have staff announced here and I will start off with Lisa Medina or whoever comes up on line.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Madam Chair, respective board members, Assistant Deputy CIO, County Counsel, Clerk of the Board, and our Calaveras community, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency and Air Pollution Control Officer. Calaveras Animal Services and all our emergency response partners had an eventful week last week and there are so many people we would like to thank at this time. We would like to thank our Calaveras OES for assisting Animal Services in the event and communicating imperative information in order for our AS team to respond. Collaborative and up-to-date information is critical when needed and OES was able to provide us and also assist us in coordinating efforts of evacuating several Calaveras animals with all boots on the ground. We would also like to thank Hold Your Horses with whom you recently signed an MOU. Hold Your Horses came to our assistance and helped us evacuate several cattle, horses, and other animals. Hold Your Horses, thank you very much. And thank you to OES for the coordination in getting their crew here. Along with Hold Your Horses, the evacuation team of Amador assisted us in the evacuation of 27 chickens and was coordinated through OES and our animal service teams. We will be looking to develop further partnerships with them in the very near future. A very special thank you to Lori Giannini and her crew at Ames Camp Fairgrounds who is always ready for us to deliver our evacuated animals to their facility. Lori and her crew were ready for our animals from the very first phone call. Not only did they provide room for our livestock, but also were able to provide room for our cats and they were able to set up room for our cats since we had an outbreak of disempower at our shelter here on Government Center site. So, thank you again Lori and Fairgrounds crew. A very special thank you also to Dr. Jenny Carlson who was called upon to evaluate a donkey that needed medical care. Dr. Jenny is available for us to assist with our animals but also donates her time for us to our free rabies and microchip clinics. By the way, our next clinic is a rabies clinic in September at Spence Creed Supply. We would also like to thank the East Bay SPCA and the San Francisco SPCA who through communication with our animal service manager, Michael Vasquez, was able to come and pull 40% of our pups to make room for potential evacuated pups. Thank you again, East Bay and San Francisco SPCA and Mike for your proactive response. And of course, I can't forget our team, our animal service team, a huge shout out and a very proud thank you to them. They were immediately available when the call went out. Our team set up 35 dog cages in our focus room and coordinated their efforts to ensure that we were ready for any challenge that came our way. Our team worked through the night to make sure we were available to the best of our resources for our Calaveras community. A very special warm hug and thanks to our animal service team, our volunteers, Focus, Public Access TV, our IT crew here on the campus for their ongoing support and collaboration in getting our message out regarding the evacuation locations through various media outlets. We never know what may come our way, but we promise to be ready, whatever we have to give, including our hearts, sweat, and some happy tears to you. Next, I have an announcement as Air Pollution Control Officer for Calaveras County. Our air quality currently is balancing between 24 and 41 particulate matters which indicates and demonstrates that air quality is satisfactory and air pollution poses little or no risk within a 24-hour period exposure. Thank you and have a great day, everybody.
Thank you, Lisa. John?
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members. John Osborne, your Director of OES. I'll start off with a fire update. As everyone knows, this incident started specifically, the electro incident started July 4th at 3:44 PM at the intersection of Electro Road and Highway 49 in Amador County. As of 7:00 AM this morning, the size of the fire is 4,478 acres. We stand at 93% containment. Full containment was expected on the 16th of this month. Best far, we've had one first responder injuries, no fatalities, either civilian or responder, no civilian injuries, no structures lost or damaged, and we still have about 452 structures in harm's way. The situation summary, hot and dry weather conditions and lowering daytime relative humidities cause continuing smoldering in stump holes and heavy fuels. Firefighters continue to patrol, mop up hot spots, and reinforce control lines. A fire suppression repair strategy has been implemented and fire management will be transitioned back to the Amador El Dorado unit. And so, there have been some slight changes to the information and media phone numbers and they are listed in the update should anyone need them. Areas within the fire perimeter itself do remain closed. All other evacuation orders have been reduced to warnings. You can visit the Calaveras County Information Center to see the latest map of where those warnings still exist. That being said, I too would like to extend our deep gratitude and thanks to a few folks. First, Incident Management Team Three from CAL FIRE, they came in and assumed this incident and did outstanding work in managing a very complex incident in the sense that not only is it two different counties that this incident took place in, it's two different CAL FIRE units and two different CAL FIRE regions being the Northern Os region and the Southern Os region. So, great big thanks to Team Three. CAL FIRE touring the Calaveras unit was instrumental in setting this up for success and the successful resolution of this as well as our local fire districts, the Amador El Dorado CAL FIRE unit, the Calaveras County Office of Education, our Sheriff's Office, our animal service folks, Frog Town, Lori and her gang at Fairgrounds, the American Red Cross, Hold Your Horses, Animal Evac Team, Lawton Ranch, and the evacuation team of Amador, Spence Ranch, one of our local vendors here that supplied us with food, animal food. Internally, our own admin team was extremely supportive as was Public Works, IWM, our partners at CHP, our partners at HHSA, our IT partners, our partners at Zone Haven, our facility folks here on campus, our probation department, CCWD, PGE, Utica Water and Power in Calaveras, Public Utilities District, as well as the East Bay Municipal Utilities District, the Amador Sheriff's Office, Cal OES, US Pro Service, Stanislaus Forest, RHR folks, and last but certainly not least, the Board of Supervisors and our acting CIO, Marcos, were all very, very supportive of us in this effort and we're extremely appreciative. To touch a little bit more about the animal aspect of our response, we really couldn't have gotten this done without our animal service folks, without Hold Your Horses and Lawton Ranch. We don't have final numbers, but it looks like we took, we housed about 20, about 40 or so animals from our side of the river and then the evacuation team of Amador housed about 150 for us as well, so we're grateful for them. This was a real test. The tensions were extremely high during this incident as this fire started within a quarter mile of the Butte Fire start and it was very reassuring to hear from all of our response partners that that was first and foremost in the minds of the folks that were out there cutting the fire line and working extremely hard to contain this fire that our end goal was to not let this become a Butte Fire 2.0 and we were successful for all of those people that I just mentioned. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from board members regarding?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make a brief, I don't want to thank everybody that, John, we just went through the list, that was a pretty exhaustive list. I do want to make the comment that where we were during the electro fire is a thousand times better than where we were in the Butte Fire. We have gotten a tremendous amount of practice standing up to EOC due to COVID, due to other emergencies, and the system works. There are always corrections and improvements that can be made, but the system that's been designed over the last seven years works. And I've gotten some really great compliments from some of our collaborators for OES that I think I should pass on, not just the technical ability of the team, but also the way they approached problems, the way that they worked with the collaborators in a very collaborative way. HHS standing up the evacuation centers and sending the EOC. I just, you know, there's the success of the fire and God bless all those firefighters and all the resources that came, but there was also the success of our organization and where we've come from where we were. I'm just, I'm really pleased and our board functioned well, we did our job, we stayed out of their way, and they did a good job. So, I just want to thank OES and I want to thank all the staff in this county and all our collaborators and, you know, and recognize the serious drama that continues to impact our communities from the Butte Fire. We could all go running out of our house when we hear the CAL FIRE spotter plane come through, we all recognize that noise now. And I just, I just really, really appreciate the efforts of our county staff and all our friends that came to, come to our aid. Thank you.
And are there board questions? No, she and none. Thank you, John, for your update. I appreciate it.
Very welcome.
At this time, are there any other staff announcements? She and none and there's none on. Do, we'll move on to general public comment. This is for any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda, it may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. Is there any public comment for any item not on the consent or regular agenda? Is there any online? She and none. If there are any in the room, we'll move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, they will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from consent for later discussion. At this time, is there any board member that wishes to pull an item? She and none, is there any staff? She and none, is there any public comment? There is no public comment. Okay. And there is none in the room? With that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent approved. Five oh. With that, we'll move on to the regular agenda and the first item is agenda item number 36. At this time, I will turn it over to the clerk to read out the agenda item.
Item number 36 is an action item from the Sheriff's Office. Number one, receive a presentation on Alert FM, a system leveraging FM radio and satellite for emergency alerting to help fill emergency notification gaps. And number two, provide direction regarding possible implementation of all hazard alert, FM radio, and satellite redundancy for emergency notification alerting.
Good morning.
Good morning, Board Chair, Supervisors, County Counsel, and Marcus, welcome. And I'm sorry. I have a quick, a little presentation for you folks. If you remember a while back here, I brought a program called Alert FM to your, to the board to talk about it. It's something that has been implemented up in Butte County and they're actually working on it in Shasta County right now and it's in other areas, but those are the only two places that I'm aware of in the state of California. I have Matthew, oh, okay, okay. Okay, I don't know, is Matthew online?
Right, yeah.
Is he, okay. Oh, that's okay. So anyhow, this is a program that I want to just bring to your attention yet again with a little bit more detail than what I've brought to you in the past, just so you know, we'll get to it in the presentation, but John Osborne from OES is working with me on this and we're looking for some funding. It's going to end up being about 600, a little over $600,000 for the first five years. I'm not, I'm not here looking for money right now, I'm just telling you kind of what we're doing and what the program is all about. That's okay. I get paid by the hour. So, do you folks remember the FM Alert program that I brought to you? Remember the little unit that I showed to you? Okay. I actually got an email from, oh, there we go. I gotta put my balls on. Okay. Hey, Matthew, good morning. Thanks for joining us. You're on mute? No? You got no audio on you? Still got no audio? I don't know if it's on our end. It shows you're unmuted.
It's unmuted.
Yeah. You've got, got no audio. This is Matt Streb, he is with Alert FM. He did a presentation at Butte County, so.
Is that working?
There you go. Now we got you.
All right.
So, everybody say good morning, Matthew.
Hello.
Okay. So, we're going to go through this, it's only about six or seven slides. Why do we need another alerting system during wildfires? Is the electric a campfire? Cell towers fail? Every bridge, NEXO, they, the signals that we send out won't be able to be delivered. During PSPS's, power goes out. Our foothill communities rely on home Wi-Fi for internet connections and their cell phones. When the power goes out, they don't have any of that. There's, there's no services. So, we went out looking for other options. I found out about Alert FM through Corey Hone up in Butte County, the sheriff up there. And what is FM Alert? The system enables us to send out an emergency alert over the FM system even when the television or radios are off. In-home receiver continuously monitors for FM signals and when we say FM signal, this is FM radio station that you listen to, you know, Cat Country and those types of stations. When an emergency alert is received, the flashing light and the emergency messages are displayed. If you see in the right-hand corner of the screen, that's what this unit looks like. It's kind of halfway blocked, but again, I showed it to you. It's, you know, a little bit bigger than a three-by-five card. It piggybacks on existing FM radio networks. The system uses overlapping signals and there's a map, we'll get to here in a little bit. This is the only company that we found that offers this kind of a system at this time. The company is in partnership with FEMA, the NOAA, USGS, and has over 200 customers in 14 different states. How does it work? When a message needs to be sent out by the Sheriff's Office, the message is crafted by our employees through our dispatch and is sent through the satellite-based system to the FM radio stations in various locations to be sent out. So, we send the signal out, it goes through the radio stations, and then they broadcast it out and that's when it hits the FM alert units that are in the houses. The receiver's battery is powered by batteries and through household battery or household power, so when the power goes out, it's got a AA battery that keeps it operating. What's nice about this unit, if you remember, is that you can unplug it, let's say you get evacuated, you can unplug it, stick it in your pocket, and evacuate, and when we give the all-clear signal, it'll be sent out on that unit, so you'll be notified. So, it lets people know what's going on. The message is crafted, the Sheriff's Office selects what geographic areas through, and I put Zone Haven in because that's the program that John has, we started that implementation that you're aware of, so we can send it out to that geofence area, so it works out real well, or it can. These are the radio stations in the north, you can see Amador's got KGBR, that KQBM is up in West Point, I talked to them, they're digitalized, so they can utilize the system. And I know, and correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, they just added like five more radio stations, I know up in the Butte County area, I was talking to them during the electro fire.
Yes.
So, they're constantly grabbing more FM radio stations, so the program is going to only get better as this thing continues on.
Right, so we, as we expand and build out the whole state, then every, every county will benefit from every additional station that we add and we anticipate about 200-plus FM stations being connected by satellite to provide a statewide system coverage.
The installation in local FM radio stations and licensing of the system for five years is $500,000. In addition, there's an annual maintenance and support fee of $40,000. Total cost of system for the first five years is $660,000. The residential in-home receivers are at 99. I know that, like I said earlier, I got an email from Matthew that they would be willing to drop it down to, I think, 69. And then, if you're going to put it in, like if you want to put it here in the board chambers or in this office, it's a bigger unit, I think it's like $399. The Sheriff's Office would like each home within our foothill communities to have the alert system, especially in the PSPS areas, which is the Level 2, Level 3 areas. Because the power goes out, you know, PGE's been shutting off the powers in past history, this would allow them to still have access to the emergency information that they wouldn't have unless they had a generator that powered their house, because if they shut it down, cell towers may go out because AT&amp;T and Verizon has their generators, but if they're not up and running, they've got no services on their phone, so they can't get the NEXO or the Code Reds. Provide funding for the alert system, the total request would be $660,000. The priority areas are the high mitigation areas and a direct tieback to the electro and Butte fires. And there is an urgent need. I know that in talking to Butte County, it took them about a year to get their program up and running. Again, during the electro fire, I talked to their sergeant that's in charge of their program and they'd actually used it three times since they got up and running and they said it works very well. Again, it's dependent on how many people buy the unit. If they don't have the unit, then obviously it's not going to work for them. I've talked to PGE, we're still in conversations with them to see if we can get some funding from them. I know John's going to be talking to FEMA, we're going to be looking for some grants to help fund this program. Again, I'm not asking for money out of you guys and I'm not asking for AB443 money, Gary. Any questions on the program? Ben?
You brought up one of my main questions with that. Each person needs to be able to purchase a small unit to be able to receive this beyond what the cost is, cost of implementation, $500,000 initially, $40,000 recurring year after year.
Right.
I'm curious, you know, you brought up at the very end, how many people in Butte County have actually purchased this unit? Do we have those numbers?
Well, what I can tell you is that when their board approved it and they went through PGE, PGE gave Butte County $100,000 because of the fire that they had just had out there and they took that $100,000 and purchased, I don't remember what the actual number was, maybe Matt can, can give me a number on that, but.
About 1,500 units.
1,500 units. And they distributed them to people that are in those danger zones and the 2 and 3's for the PSPS's was my understanding. And that would be, that's something that we're trying to look at doing in our county is to find some funding so that we can buy enough units to get it to everybody in, like Jack's area, because you're definitely, and Marita, you guys are in that Level 2, Level 3 PSPS areas, to try and get those to all those people out there at no cost to them.
Thank you.
Jack?
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. $660,000 is a big price tag. I'd have a deputy for that same amount of time, pretty close.
Yeah.
And then, we want to spend 660 public dollars in order to give people in my district the ability to go out and purchase a $100 receiver. So, that's going to be a tough one to go with. I'd hate to spend over half a million dollars and then have a dozen people who are interested in using it. So, we'll get to that when we get to the money down the road. I'm also concerned about, you know, we have multiple redundancy. We've got cell towers with generators, we've got all this internet, we've got radio, we're already putting out public stuff over the radio. So, I think when we bring this, something like this back, I'd want to know what is, we have a solution, but what is the problem? And how big is the problem? And is, if we're given $660,000 at the highest and best use to solve the problem, that'd be a question for you and OES to figure out.
Right.
When you come back to that. So, my question would be, those are going to be my concerns in the next, my question would be, do these units have microphones in them? These are remotely activated by our government in people's living rooms, so there's some sort of switch on and toggle in there.
It's outgoing only. We, we send a message out, we cannot receive anything from these units. That's not how they're designed. They're designed to, they're designed like an FM, remember the old transistor radios we used to carry around in our pockets as a kid? That's basically what it is. So, you can't, you can't talk, I can't hear you. It only goes one way.
I hear that, but.
Conspiracy theory, Jack?
That would be a, well, who I represent?
Yeah.
And those are the people that you need to get to use this, because they're the ones that are going to be in the bottom of the canyon.
Right.
And maybe don't have all the redundancy, so you'll have to deal with that question when it comes up too.
Right.
So, I have pretty serious concerns about this. If somebody came up with the money, well, that's. If somebody came up with the money, well, that's great for the alert guys, they're going to get their 660. I just would be concerned about how many of our residents, unless it's completely subsidized like that up in Butte County, how we would, how it makes sense. So, that's all for the next phase of this conversation, but those will be the questions I'll continue to have.
And just so you know, that's my goal, is to find the funding so that we can count how many people are in that PSPS area to purchase those units, to give them those units, so there's no cost to those people in those areas, because they're more affected than anybody else, and to keep those costs down. And then, the people that are in the outlying areas that want that system, they can purchase the system.
And when we bring this back and you ask for the $660,000, I will ask, is this the highest and best use of over half a million dollars for emergency preparedness in our county?
Well, and like I told you when I brought this to you the first time, just on a brief note, this, there's multiple redundancies to let people know that there's fires and earthquakes, snowstorms, I mean, you can use it for almost anything. It also has the ability to let you know, you know, about earthquakes and whatnot. So, it's been recent that we've had earthquakes in our area, which is unusual. There is no one-size-fits-all for alerting people. We have Everbridge, we have NICSIL. This is just another program out there. Is it expensive? Yeah, but for me, if it saves one life, it's paid for itself. So, there's, redundancy is not a bad thing when it comes to trying to alert people. Again, this system works off of an avenue that we don't have right now. It works off of radio waves, and the radio waves are not susceptible to being, having the power shut off. Again, it's just, it's just another avenue, Jack, is all it is.
I totally understand, and I look forward to it. It's just, we play a zero-sum game. If we give that money to this, we can't use that money for something else.
Well, and that's why I'm not, I'm not looking for general fund dollars. We're looking at trying to find grants and funding from other avenues. Been working with McClintock's office on the federal side to see if we can't get something through FEMA. I'm looking at other avenues. I'm just bringing this to your attention, that this is something, I'm just trying to show you that we're working to try and make things better. John did a fantastic job with the new system that they've got. This would tie into that, because you use that geofence, and then we can send this signal out to that geofence area. If we end up with a Butte fire, those cell towers, their generators are going to be toast. They're going to, they're going to go down. This is a system that would still hopefully work. It's just another avenue. That's all it is.
I understand. Thank you, Sheriff.
Marita?
The issue, the goal's the same in both District 2 and District 3. The residents are different. I don't think that the residents are different in the conversation. The towers frequently are down in the Evans Pass corridor.
You're talking about the cell towers?
Cell towers.
Yeah, absolutely.
Frequently.
Yes.
I mean, I'd like to see this kind of system. Would it say the new Zone Haven? Would it give the zones? Okay, Zone E, whatever, would that come out on these, too?
Absolutely. When CAL FIRE gives us the information that, hey, you need to evacuate Forest Meadows. Forest Meadows is in that Zone Haven, so we get that information from John, and then we put out the alert on those units that this area is being evacuated. So, they do tie in together, yes.
So, would it be zone-specific?
We can't make it zone-specific.
So, you do Forest Meadows on one, and the people who live in Arnold or Dorrington who have different zones, would their receiver be showing just theirs?
No, that's what the geofence is. The geofence is, is we can go to Forest Meadows and say, okay, you guys are being mandatory evacuated. Then we could do Hanford Hill, Avery, and Arnold and say, you're on alert. So, we can separate it out for whatever we need with the program, and it would go to each individual area.
So, my receiver would tell me X.
Get the heck out.
Would Avery's receiver tell them Y at the same time mine's telling me A?
It would be a, no, it would be a different tone-out, because they're in a different geofence area. That's what I'm saying. We would, if there was an evacuation of Forest Meadows, we would say, okay, send the tone-out to Forest Meadows, hey, you need to get out now, you're being evacuated. We could send right after that, minute, a minute later, and say, okay, Avery, you're on alert.
Got it, got it. So, when you tell Forest Meadows, okay, you have to evacuate, does it say go up the hill or down the hill?
We can, that's a question, Matt. We can do that, correct?
Yeah, well, you can type in whatever message you want. It's customized, so it, you know, it's not specific to any event, because you're typing it, you're basically learning as you go, depending on what you want the citizen to do.
It's kind of like your pagers, you can type in the message that you want to send out.
So, some can be pre- handed, pre-messaged, some can be, and then others are customized. And I just wanted to note also, not only are you getting earthquake warnings, but you're getting all of the weather warnings coming from the Weather Service automatically, in addition to that we have connected to Zone Haven, and also, you would have your own option to build, to draw your own polygon with a message in addition to the Zone Haven database. So, you have a lot of flexibility.
Who controls the messaging?
Sheriff's Office, through our dispatch center.
So, let me get to another trauma drama one. In the Evans Pass corridor is snow.
You guys don't get any snow, do you?
Yeah, in Dorrington, where you go play on your little Speedo machines or whatever. Well, he does, he goes up and he rescues people he knows with...
Snowmobile, she was talking about snowmobiles. Let's be clear.
Oh, what did I?
So, is Speedo on some of it?
I'm sorry.
I clarified for you.
I made the snowmobile, oh my gosh. Oh, Lord love a duck. Okay. So, would, who would then, would you still, you'd still be doing it then with Public Works, saying, yes, the snowplows are out in Dorrington or the, I mean, that is a continual issue, and it's getting worse?
Yeah. We could absolutely do that if Public Works wanted to call us and say, hey, these roads are going to be closed, or we have plows coming. We can, again, like Matthew just said, we can dictate it to whatever we want the message to say. So, we could do that geofence in the Dorrington or Camp Connell or the whole way from Arnold all the way up through the program and tell them whatever we want to say. So, we can use it for other things, other than fire, other than earthquakes, other than weather. It's open to us to use for whatever we need, so, absolutely.
So, let me bring one life right now. Would there be one saying, yeah, we're having a heat alert, and we're going to have a warming or cooling shelter at Fogtown, or cooling shelter at San Andreas Town Hall? You could do that.
Absolutely. It's another way to get the message out to our constituents, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I see hands up on the screen, so I just want to make sure that I get staffed. John, do you still have something to say?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. To give you kind of an overview of a couple of things, the majority of the county is listed as, the sheriff mentioned, Type 2 and Type 3 threat zones. The majority of our county is either in High or Very High, which is 2 and 3. So, the impact area is across the broader part of the county. So, just something to keep in mind to kind of give you an idea about the area covered in that conversation, A. The other thing to keep in mind is, you know, from the alert and warning standpoint, obviously we are always driving to reach more people through different means. There are always folks that don't have Facebook, or don't have Wi-Fi, or are still using flip phones, and this is another avenue to reach those folks that are, that are our residents in an expedient way to reach them. The other, the other nice feature about them is, as, especially in District 3, is the short-term rentals. You know, a short-term rental owner could purchase one of these, the boxes, for lack of better terms, their receivers, and place them in their Airbnb, and then whomever is occupying the Airbnb on that particular weekend when we have something, we could, we could more effectively reach them. So, there are a lot of positives to the system. The price tag is, is high, I agree, and that's why, you know, our conversations from the start between the sheriff's office and my office is that we want to find a way to subsidize this, so it's potentially cost-neutral for the county in the implementation. You know, once we get down to a reasonable cost, the annual cost isn't, isn't terrible, it's on par with essentially some of the other systems that we, that we operate now. So, from my perspective, obviously, I want to go after every avenue that I can to alert folks within the county, and at the same time, we're, it's in the forefront of our mind that the cost needs to be neutral to do that for our residents. So, that's my input on it, and I appreciate you guys taking the time to learn more about this system. Thank you.
May I ask you something else? Is that okay?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes. So, I just wanted to mention, as we, thank you, Mr. Alabarta. It is a unit right here, so that's about the size of an iPhone. You also get radio, you also receive the radio, main channel, so it acts as a radio in addition to receiving the alerts. And then the battery here is here, the AA battery right here, so that lasts about a month. So, we did reduce the price. We had some, you know, we had to protect ourselves because of all the shipping and the, we read about it in the paper, about shipping and the cost going up. It's been dramatic, but we want this to be successful. So, we're basically going to act as PG&E and subsidize, you know, $30 of the receiver, not only for Calaveras, but also for Butte and Shasta Counties. So, that'll be, that'll put the price at $69, and which will include programming, you know, basically a battery and also the cable that would plug, need to be plugged into the wall. And the real use case, I know with Sheriff Hohny and Sheriff Johnson, is that the real use case that people, that everyone's trying to protect themselves from, is that the power is turned off in the middle of the night, the cell phone is off, and you have no way to alert your citizens in the middle of the night to evacuate. That's the, that's the use case that is the most concerning to most, all of the emergency management community. So, that's the one we're protecting against. And the other thing is, I would add, is we have a fulfillment center in Chico, and we have over 6,500 receivers and inventory that we're able to distribute to the counties that are participating with the Alert FM system to date. So, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Staubert?
Just one other thing, just to talk about the other side of the coin. You know, this, I can see with this, it's going to have text on there, so it's more elaborate than, let's say, I always keep a couple of emergency radios at my house, they're the wind-up ones, I can keep power to whenever, whenever I need them, just in case of emergencies. But, we do have the radio stations in place, and contracting with them, is there any way we could do this cheaper by having them put out the emergency alerts? And, which they do anyway during emergencies, and people can find out through having their car radio on.
Well, the emergency alerts that you hear out on the radios are generated, and then correct me if I'm wrong, John, those are directed by OES. So, OES will get a hold of the radio stations, and they'll tell them to put out the systems. This is, the radio stations for this unit, for this program, they're just a pass-through. They're the ones, we tell them, we're the ones that put in the message that we want to send out, and then it just goes through their system. They're just a pass-through, they're not the ones that are putting it out. I mean, we could, let's just, for instance, say that we have KVML over in Sonora, and for some reason they go down, it might jump to the one up in West Point, and if they happen to go down, it might pull out of Stockton's radio program. So, you can't, you can't just say, hey, have the radio station do it, because you don't know where, where the incident's going to be and who's going to be affected. Again, it works through satellites, so that we're, the sheriff's office, so we're the ones that know who we're evacuating. So, in essence, we're the one that puts it out. If you start relying on other entities to put out your message, the message can get lost, the message can be delayed, that's kind of like when you call 911 for a fire, that 911 call comes to the sheriff's office, then we have to transfer it to CAL FIRE, and then CAL FIRE tones out the fire. Those are government entities that are in control of that. You start putting a private entity in there, you don't know who you've got sitting there, whether they're going to put the message out now or later. So, it just, it's a good system that works for us.
Thank you, Rick.
Chief Supervisor Carley?
Would there be a maintenance fee for the units themselves, for the individuals? Like, there'd be a maintenance fee for the county of $40,000 a year. Is there a maintenance fee on top of the $60,000?
Yeah, so basically, that's one of the big advantages, there's no contract or message fee for those receivers. You know, people forget, and I paid $1,000 for this, and I pay about $60 a month. So, this is a one-time purchase, and it costs me nothing. So, there's no message fee, no contract for the life of the product.
What is the life of the product?
Basically, we designed it for at least 10-plus years of reliability. So, it's, you know, it's a 24/7 operation device, because we're really broadcasters, so we designed it to 10-plus years.
Jack?
I would agree with the, my question was, is it going to be like iPhone upgrade? In three years, it's going to slow down, and you got to buy a new one. You mentioned the radio broadcasters. Are they required by law, like for the emergency broadcasting system, to participate? Or is it an opt-in thing? Or are we just going to take over their airwaves for them?
Well, first, yeah, so basically, there's two paths on the radio station's spectrum. One is the main channel which you hear, and that's where EAS comes across. And I might add is that when EAS is sent out, it's sent out to their whole coverage area, so there's no addressability. So, what we're using, a side band that's called Radio Data System, that's the same data channel that sends out the song and title information to your car radio. So, it's inaudible, it's a channel just sitting there that we basically have converted into an alert channel. But to answer your question, we are partners with all the broadcasters. We have endorsements from the California Broadcast Association, from the National Association of Broadcasters, so we really are, we originated our company out of broadcasting, and so we have relationships with all of these broadcasters. The thing that's unique about radio broadcasters is normally, generally, they live in the community, they know the community, and they're integral to providing emergency information. I haven't, I've never gotten a message from AT&amp;T to save my life, it's always from the radio or television providers. So, they have a vested interest, and that's why they're great partners for what we're trying to, what we're accomplishing.
So, they have to opt-in, correct?
Yeah, they have to opt-in. We have never been, had a problem with a radio station not wanting to participate. I'll put it that way.
Never. Never's a long time.
When I, before I brought this...
And we have 1,800 stations on the air.
Before I brought this to you the first time, I actually went over to KVML and talked to Clark Broadcasting, and they were all on board. And when I talked to the radio station up in West Point, same thing, they were all on board. They didn't even hesitate. They said, absolutely. So, I can't imagine that they would not want to help.
So, Alert FM doesn't have any contracts with any of those radio stations? It's not, it's just...
The answer is, yes, we do have contracts, we sign a simple agreement with them, that they're going to pass the information. But once we, and it's no cost to the radio station, so we're, you know, as part of the fee that you're paying for, the service fee, we're providing all the equipment, all the satellite service, installation, operation, and maintenance for that broadcaster, and they allow us to go into their station, we set it up, and, you know, as I mentioned, it's 24/7, you know, it's designed to work all the time, anytime. anytime. And so we, we have relationships with all these broadcasters. So we're, you know, we're lever, you're leveraging it just like we are for the fraction of the cost it would take to set up a broadcast station or a cell site.
Thank you.
Are there any other board questions before turning it over to public comment? Um, okay. At this time, is there any public comment?
There is no online public comment.
Okay. And Jean, man in the room, bring it back. This is just an informational item. Um, is there anything else? Can you turn it back over to Rick? Anything else?
No, again, I just, I just wanted to bring this to you to, to show what the capabilities are, give you a little bit better view from what I did the last time, um, and let you know that, uh, with John and myself, uh, we're definitely looking into seeing what we can do. Uh, I don't want to use any general funds, we want to see if we can get this funded from the outside entity, uh, to help our constituents. That's all.
No, thank you for bringing that, um, the presentation. Thank you, John and Matthew, for being here.
You guys have a great day.
You too. You got the next one, so you're, you're up again.
Oh, I am the next item, too.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Um, okay, with that, if there's nothing else, we're going to move on to item number thirty-seven. Um, do you need to come and sit with him as well? Do you want to come up and sit with him?
You don't have to sit with him. Hold on, he and you all talking.
Um, okay, well, before you get started, I got to turn it over to clerk. Um, we are now on item number thirty-seven. I will turn it over to clerk to read out.
Item number thirty-seven is an action item from the sheriff's office. Following a public hearing, introduce wave first reading and authorize summary, summary publication of an uncodified ordinance adopting the Calaveras County Sheriff's Office Military Equipment Use Policy in accordance with AB four-eight-one to ensure the continuity of the use of equipment that is vital to the safety of citizens and law enforcement officers of Calaveras County.
And with that, I will open the public hearing. Get up.
Good morning. Anthony Everhard, Lieutenant, Calaveras County Sheriff's Office. Last year on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, Governor Newsom signed Assembly Bill four-eight-one into law. Uh, it establishes new requirements on ways such as the sheriff's office is going to acquire, fund, and use military equipment. The key is to understand what military equipment is defined per AB four-eight-one. It's not only equipment that is procured or obtained through the military, but includes a lot of items that are widely and commonly used by law enforcement. Items such as drones, less lethal, um, options for us. The intent behind four-eight-one is to provide a public forum to discuss the acquisition of military equipment. It requires every law enforcement agency that is seeking to use military equipment must create a military equipment use policy, present the policy in front of you, yourself, and, uh, for body approval, and produce annual reports pertaining to the use of military equipment and public complaints regarding its use. Such items are already appropriated through the sheriff's office budget. Um, the requirement under AB forty-one, it does specify that equipment policy is not approved within a hundred eighty days of submission to the government body, we must cease its use. Um, I'm here asking for the wave of the first reading of the ordinance and authorize a summary publication of the ordinance adopting the CC SO Sheriff's Office Policy, Military Equipment Use Policy. Um, I plan to be back on July twenty-sixth to finalize AB four-eight-one. Is there any questions?
Any questions by the board?
Calloway? Lieutenant, does the board get to approve the equipment that's purchased or acquired beforehand?
Um, attached, you should have received a copy of the ordinance, the policy and attachment aid. The attachment, uh, section is actually what we currently have in stock and what we're trying to, if, if there might be some that we're seeking additional items. The reason why we're seeking additional items is our suppliers, just like we were talking about earlier, um, it's just hard to come by. We have to plan for an unplanned event, not only in our county, but if a neighboring county asks for our assistance, like from our SWAT team, we have to provide our munitions, our less lethal tools, and we have to plan for that event, especially with some of the movements last year, um, that occurred down in larger areas like Sacramento and, and San Francisco. We have to plan for those events. Sometimes the numbers are, they seem a little high for what we might deal with Calaveras County, but there's requirements through less lethal, um, where you have to do so much training, and if you're going to have so many operators, they have to do two rounds or three rounds. So when we're asking for ten, and if we have two or three operators put in two or three rounds to qualify on our annual training, it's, it's, it's needed.
But under the ordinance, what's allowed, there's some pretty heavy-duty military equipment on that list.
That's, that's correct, but the sheriff's office, i- if you compare to some of the categories, I believe there was fifteen or sixteen categories that were listed, um, the sheriff's office doesn't have MRAPs. We don't have some of these other category, categories that, that's listed into, um, the ordinance.
And Supervisor Calloway, the way that this ordinance, or I'm sorry, the way that the statute, the state statute is structured, um, the sheriff's office is required to come to the board with a list of what they currently have as well as what they intend to purchase, and that's what, um, they've brought to you today. And then, um, on a year, and then once this policy is in place, if the board, um, does adopt this ordinance, then on a yearly basis, um, you guys get to come back and, um, with a, with both an updated list, um, of anything that they've acquired, you know, in the past year, and then anything they intend to purchase going forward, as well as, um, the board has to on a yearly basis renew the ordinance, which is very bizarre, and I don't think whomever wrote this in the legislature has worked in local government, because that's not a typical, um, procedure, but that's, that's how it goes, so you'll be seeing this on a yearly basis.
Yeah, but that's not what this ordinance, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, counsel, but the things that are listed includes but not limited to weaponized aircraft, vessels, tracked armored vehicles. I, I mean-
Yes, those are all the types of things.
Pretty, I'm not saying sophisticated that they can't learn it, but-
I must say-
There's some pretty sophisticated military things that are in this ordinance that we could have.
Supervisor Calloway, that, that's a, that's a generic, that came from the legislature. Those are the things that we have to bring to you if we're going to get them. Those aren't things that this sheriff's office is going to be getting. I mean, we, we don't have the capabilities of using tracked equipment or some of those other items. Um, the, the list that we have given you is what we have, but what you're seeing in the ordinance or in the, in the, in the bill is generic to cover all what the legislature has decided as classified as military equipment. If you look under attachment aid, we're not asking to acquire any of those items. Every year that we must bring, um, it's my understanding that the ordinance, the attachment part would be an update, like if the sheriff's office is going to see for that, you would have a say, the final say.
That's correct.
This is from the, this is all copied from the legislation?
Yes.
Okay, to state of the system, okay.
The, on here, for anyone, but I, and it's exactly what is in the legislation, but-
What's on my list?
Yeah.
I don't have any tracking units on my list.
No, 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 on the legislation. I, I just, I find, I just get concerned that, um, no, yeah, you can take offense. Sheriff's, I mean, we get all these things, these new toys, and they're becoming more sophisticated and more lethal, and that's a concern.
That's the purpose of the legislation, Supervisor Calloway, is that if we're going to get that stuff, we have to bring it to you now to have you approve it or deny it prior to it, to prior to its use.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'd like to refine on that a little bit. And my question, I'll start off. This is set, AB four-eight-one, its intent is to give public the opportunity to input on it. When you're buying stuff, you have to bring it to us anyway.
That's right.
So this gives them the opportunity. Does this satisfy, my question goes to county council. Does this satisfy thi- this, this public hearing and subsequently in the years moving forward, as we add things to this list or take things off, uh, does this satisfy AB four-eight-one with the public input for them, for people to come in here and say, hey, we, we protest you having-
Right.
-this type of thing in our arsenal within Calaveras County?
So this is, this is part of it. Um, as mentioned in the staff report, the sheriff's office already had to post this on their website for a period of time, which they've done. Um, as you said, we're having the public hearing today, um, on an annual basis. Um, in addition to it coming to the ordinance and the, the annual report, the list, coming back to the board for review and renewal, um, the sheriff's office also has to hold a community meeting. And so that's, aside from this, so that's something that, on an annual basis going forward, they'll be doing that as well. So there's multiple, um, engagement points for the public or points for which the public to, uh, give input or comment. I believe there's a comment, um, option on the sheriff's website as well.
So with all that, that satisfies-
Yes, that's, yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Are there any other board questions, comment? Okay, this is a public key, oh, sorry, Jeff.
Do you guys have the tools that you need, Lieutenant? I mean, I, we all watched, we all watched Evalda, and it scared all of us. I know that would never happen in this county, ever. I know our officers, I know their officers, and, and that's not who we are, but I want to make sure you've got ballistic shields or long guns that you need to avoid those types of situations where time matters.
Supervisor, every, um, every year we reevaluate each team and create our own little wish list, our own like type of projects. With Assembly Bill four-eight-one, it's going to add another step into it. Not only public's going to have a comment, but each one of those memos, each one of us, uh, commanders for our respective divisions, we write that and we forward it on to the sheriff, and, and we prioritize what we have. Of, of course, we can always use one extra, you know, ballistic shield. We like to have them in every car. Um, sometimes just getting them with the supervisors and because supervisors are typically at the same call, we meet that need. Um, I believe we are meeting the needs of everybody and every officer on the streets. If you go through the attachment list, a lot of those items that you're reading, and we only have three. And if we have to do annual training, we might only have one operator that, that is, that is up to date on its annual use to use that machine or, or that, that launcher, so to speak. So it, it becomes imperative that if we can't get this item because our supplier is on back order, that's why we have an additional item, and they're all under, um, they're listed as their description and model numbers, where you can actually go online and, and look them up, so to speak, and we can get this and replace it at. Um, I do understand that some of the items might be redundant, it's just because our suppliers are so backlogged, we're not buying large sum of like LA, Stockton, Sacramento. I will say that Assembly Bill four-eight-one, we're right with the process, and I believe City of Angels did it last week. I followed Santa Clara, Stockton, and City of Sacramento, all their policies have been approved and, uh, we're being used.
Thank you very much.
I, any other, yeah, go ahead.
Well, this list that you prepared here and will be prepared annually, um, will that be posted on your website? We went to SO website and tried to find this list sometime. Will it be posted on there?
Yes, sir, it's already on there now.
It's already on there now?
We had it up there since the, until end of April, I believe, the twenty-seventh, twenty-ninth. We took it down because we made some adjustments and stuff in preparation for today's hearing, our meeting, and then, um, we put it back up on the June ninth to meet our, our requirements per AB four-eight-one, the public comment, um, portion, so we were enabled to be here today.
Thank you.
And my goal is, is after we have this established as well, is to have that, that community meeting also posted on that site. We're not handing it.
So during the course of the year and coming years, you, you, the public can go on your site anytime and make any public comment at any time. There will be no requirement time for posting. They, anytime that they go on there during the year, they can post any comments they want on it?
That's correct. Um, it's actually the public comment box that we leave on our website is actually larger than actually, uh, the ordinance and the policy itself.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry for another question, though. What's the threshold on the public comments for any item when it comes to protest? I mean, there's going to be that consistent person out there that just protests anything an officer carries. So what's our threshold?
Um, if, if the question is whether there's some amount of legal, um, public comment or negative, amount of negative public comments that somehow puts a stop to this, the answer is no. It's, it's an opportunity for the public to offer their feedback. Um, it's not like there's some sort of, you know, protest threshold where then it doesn't get passed.
The fa- the final action resides with the board after we review those said public comments?
Yes.
Okay, that's.
Any other questions? I have a question, um, it's more toward the legislation than you guys, but I'm confused why we have to report and mobile IC. I mean, fire department uses it, OES uses it, why, why is this legislation capturing those? Because in an incident, you're going to have, you're going to be mobile regardless.
That would be a question for the legislature.
I, I will add that to my list of other questions.
Yeah, okay, I'm just really, you know, at what point are we, I, I just-
I, I have issues with the military, that actually, the quotation of this military equipment that the bill's actually written for. It's nothing that's procured or obtained through the military, which there might be a couple items on our list, but these are all items that are widely and commonly used by law enforcement up and down throughout the state worldwide. The Bearcat that we purchased is not anything that we purchased from the military. That was from a private entity, but if, because it's an armored vehicle, they consider that military equipment.
But what do you mean that if you're getting shot at?
It's a very broad definition.
I, I'm just, I, it just, it's not, this is just insanity. I mean, I, not the fire department. I, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, it's-
Welcome to our world.
I will say, uh, one of the public comments is exactly that, this bill has nothing to do with military equipment, because it's not being used by the military. That was the, one of the comments that I, that I have actually made.
Okay.
Can you answer your question? We can't answer your question.
No, I just, I had to really say that out loud, because it was just bugging me, reading this, and it's just ridiculous at, how far is this going to stretch for, um, emergency public safety? Um, okay, so you're late on, do you have anything to add?
Oh, I was just going to, um, suggest that when this comes back to the board, um, on the twenty-sixth for adoption, um, that maybe that the public comments are, make sure that the board has those prior to adoption, anything that's been received through that date.
Okay. Um, if there's no other comments or questions from the board, I need to turn it over to public comment. Okay, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment on my end.
Okay, um, Jean, oh-
I, I just do have one more quick question, has to do with the website and the public comments. Uh, do the public comments stay up there? Can anybody read all the public comments? Or they just go in and you guys take them out and just the, the AB four-fourty-one and your list on there?
This, when we wrote this policy and we went into what division had what, we met with, um, all, all of our lieutenants and our command staff, and each one of us wrote down our inventory. So to answer the question is, each one of those commanders and those respective divisions were part of this group, so every time somebody goes in there, we get an email alert, just like if you were emailing me to, to look and, and to read. Um, so they actually go to the group that's, um, they, they go to the email group. The question is-
So they go to email?
Can the public see the other public comments?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think so.
You don't think so? So they're not up there posting for everybody's comment?
No, when I clicked on it to, to put a comment, just to make sure it's working, um, it, it took me to enter my name here and that type of stuff, and I created a test, that's why it was important.
Okay. But you will bring those public comments, whatever public comments, when we come back with this, right?
We'll get them to you prior to that.
Okay, um, we've done public comment, there's none in the room, we'll bring it back. Is there a motion, um, this is an action item? Um, this is the first reading. Um, is there a motion?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Close, I need to close the public hearing, sorry. Anything else before I close the public hearing? CNN, public hearing closed. Is there a motion to, um, on this item?
So moved out of the chair.
I'll say it.
All in favor of?
Aye.
I'd like to make a comment first.
Yes.
Um, I'm gonna vote for this, but I have a real concern when police departments and sheriff's departments have the ability to purchase military equipment of the caliber that's discussed in the legislation. I think it is a dangerous path to go down.
And again, supervisor, that's what this bill is designed for, so that you have the ability to tell me, I can't purchase it.
I'd be happy to. Thank you.
I know you will.
So, Marita, what's your vote?
I, uh.
Okay, so we do have a five oh. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
No, um, no airplanes that can drop bombs.
No. Yeah.
Next, we have item number 38, and I'm gonna allow the clerk to read it out, and then I will turn it over to Supervisor Toffinelli.
Item number 38 is an informational item from the administrative office to receive a report out from Supervisor Toffinelli regarding the Mountain Valley Emergency Medical Services, MBE MS Agency.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Madam Chair. This is just an update and informational item on, um, Mountain Valley EMS Agency, which is the provider of the contracts for the ambulance services in now was five counties, is now four counties. Those counties are Alpine, Amador, Mariposa, and Calaveras. Um, we had a meeting yesterday, um, which was our first meeting without Stanislaus County. Uh, Stanislaus County pulled out of the JPA effective June 31st, and on July 1st, we became a four-county JPA. There was an MOU negotiated with Stanislaus, and it was signed on June 29th. And it went relatively smoothly. Um, there were some issues that, um, had to do with some monetary requests that the JP had, which had to do with, um, the cost associated with Stanislaus pulling out of the JPA. And what that means to the remaining four counties. They agreed to, and part of the MOU, to pay for the existing office space for the month of July. Um, that cost is close to, it's about $6,725 a month for that facility we're in now. Uh, they covered that cost. We are moving to a facility in Copperopolis at the Lake Tullock Plaza. Um, the cost of that office space will drop to about $12.75 a month. So, it's a huge savings, uh, moving forward. Um, there were some issues that we had with the staff that will, that we had in place when Stanislaus County was there. There was about eight positions that were lost when they pulled out. And part of the, um, compensation that was given to us was the accrued monies that those, um, employees had, um, while they were employed and no, no longer employed by this JPA. And that Stanislaus be covering those costs. They agreed to do that. So, we recovered money from that. And then we recovered some other money that had to do with the moving, uh, the cost of moving now the space we're in and moving to Copperopolis. Uh, so overall, um, the amount of funds that were received, uh, will be received. They have 30 days to pay. Um, from Stanislaus is about $65,000 total. I had some issues with that. That's another story. Um, but the final MOU is about $65,000 in financial compensation paid to, um, the JPA. There was some staff requirements on our side to meet, uh, the MOU with information and, um, transitioning the information that has to do with the contracts um, that were existing in Stanislaus County with their providers. Um, first watch data, which, um, has to do with, um, reporting time of ambulances from when they're dispatched to they get to the scene. Um, and all of that data was transferred over to them, so they have that in place by July 1st. And that was quite extensive. There was a lot of work staff had to do in order to meet that. But, um, they did that and it was transferred over. And Stanislaus now is their own, um, EMS agency. One of the issues that we have is, it's not really an issue because it, people aren't gonna, aren't gonna see any difference in it. But, um, when Stanislaus left, they had, um, some trauma center hospitals within their county, um, that had to do with transporting people that have stroke or trauma like car accidents or, or accidents in nature. That our two hospitals here are not at the level, a trauma level two or trauma level three that can take those patients. What happens here, our two, which is one in Amador and here in Calaveras, are base, what they call base, um, hospitals. So, they, they, when somebody is in an accident or somebody has a stroke and they're transported here, um, they, they just get them maintained. They don't treat them, but they maintain them in order to be transported to a trauma level, uh, hospital. Um, normally, before Stanislaus left, we had contracts with the hospitals in Stanislaus County, uh, which were trauma level two and three. So, we were just transported to there. Now that we're out of it, um, we don't have contracts with those hospitals. Um, but you're not gonna see any difference because when the patient comes to our hospitals here or in Amador, the doctors are set up where they're gonna be transferred, the best place for them to be transferred to, whether that's Davis, whether that's Lowdy Memorial or, or Stock St. Joseph's, or even to Modesto still now. It's just we won't have contracts in place because of state legislature saying that the local EMS agencies are the ones that have contracts with the local hospitals. And, and we don't have trauma hospitals here within our four counties. So, basically, you won't see a whole lot of difference. There won't be a whole lot of difference as far as that goes. But it's just so you know and people understand that we don't have trauma level hospitals here in the remaining four counties. Um, I did have a conversation, um, with the hospital, a little bit of a conversation. We haven't gone forward with it, possibly Calaveras moving to a level two trauma center. But that's a ways off. It, there's a lot involved in order to get certified by the state and by our LMSA. Our LMSA would have to certify it too, um, in order to get to that level. It's not just something that happened.
Great, I, so, um, someone needs a trauma center, they'll, in Calaveras, they go to Mark Twain initially, and Mark Twain can send them wherever they.
Um, normally, whatever treating doctor is there, um, and decides what's the best place for them to be transported to for what their, their needs are, um, we'll, we'll set up that and be transferred.
So, we don't need, um, to have contracts with Lowdy or Modesto?
At, at this point, because we don't have trauma level centers in, in, in the four counties.
So, they can just go?
Yeah, we don't, only the local ones for those trauma level centers. We do have contracts with our two base level contracts with their base level, um, hospitals, but it's not to do with trauma, um, transporting or stroke.
Thank you.
Um, again, the agency will be moving from its current office location to, um, from Modesto to Copperopolis. Uh, there is currently some minor tenant improvements going on there. Uh, we should be in there by July, uh, excuse me, by August 1st. Um, and we'll be local here. Um, also, over the next few weeks, uh, agency staff will be scheduling the professional movers and identifying what furniture and equipment will be transferred. Obviously, the office we have in Modesto is, is very large and there's a lot of equipment there. And so, um, a lot of it won't be necessarily be able for us to use. We'll be looking for some storage area to store, store some of that equipment if we ever needed in the future. But a lot of, had, a lot of that equipment that we're not gonna be using in the current office had to do with Stanislaus County and the size of county they were and the amount of, um, service that was being used there. Um, so, we will be moving just what we need there. Um, we were looking for some storage facilities or storage areas for us to be able to store some of that equipment. I wanna talk a little bit about our preliminary budget that was passed in May. And there was some, there was some, um, comments made about the budget that was passed. And, um, we, we had a big situation here with Stanislaus leaving. We didn't, we don't know moving into the next year, um, everything that we're going to be needed and personnel that's gonna be needed to function without Stanislaus County. And it was the board's wishes that when we move forward, at least for this first year, that we made sure we had, um, enough in the budget, enough personnel to cover everything. So, nobody that uses our service or the ambulance services, um, or even air services, that we would be lacking. We didn't want to, in this transition, any, anybody that uses it to lose anything. And so, we put enough in our budget to cover all bases. As we go forward during the year, uh, we'll have a mid-year budget adjustment that we normally do. And going through the year, we'd be able to see this year what we actually need and what we don't, don't need. And be able to make the adjustments as we go, at least at mid-year and going into next year. But our main concern was being able to, our budget was large enough to be able to cover any needs that may come up unknowingly. So, we, we, our total budget for next year is $752,000, uh, which approximately $400,000 of, thousand, $400,000 of that is coming out of our reserve. We lost a tremendous amount of money when Stanislaus County left. Um, that came from matching funds from state and federal government because most of our funds that we received from that, operating funds we received, is based on population. And the four counties total don't even come close to the population of Stanislaus County. And so, we lost a tremendous amount of money in there. And the contracts that we had with those trauma levels hospitals and the contracts we had with the ambulance providers in Stanislaus County made up a tremendous amount of our budget over the course of the last 20 years or 28 years that Stanislaus has been in there. So, we currently have, um, our finances currently, uh, we have $1.5 million that is gonna be transferred from, um, Stanislaus Treasury into Calaveras Treasury. Uh, that will be done within this week. Uh, we have $301,000 on deposit in Valley First Credit Union. And we normally, that's how we pay our bills. We take it, a transfer out of Stanislaus County Treasury into, um, the Valley First Credit Union and then write checks to pay our bills out of that. So, it's currently, there's $301,000 in that. And then there will be about $126,000, $127,000 that will be left in Stanislaus County Treasury for the next 60 days in case anything, um, comes up that's not covered, that Stanislaus County would have to cover from Mountain Valley MS. There's no money anticipated being taken out of that. But after 60 days, that will be transferred to Calaveras County Treasury. So, we have about $1.9 million, over $1.9 million right now in this current JPA with four counties involved. And, um, there is still checks to be deposited and money coming in. So, that number will go up. But as we start functioning going into the new year with our budget, you will see some of it going down. But, um, we are, we are making adjustments on that. We, on our next meeting on eight, on August 8th, um, we have, um, some conversation about fee schedules to, um, increase our financial situation going into the rest of this year and going into the future years in order to, um, have more, generate more revenue coming in to pay the bills and maintain, um, the service that we have seen and continue to want to see, um, to our constituents and, um, our providers. So, I think, um, our board feels very good about that and feels that, um, this, this use of our, uh, reserve funds is not gonna be quite as much as what we put into it right now and that we will cover any of that going forward with our fee schedules that we, we'd be talking about and putting in place. So, um, I think there's a good handle on it. I don't think we will be in the red anytime after this year. So, is there any questions?
Stopper?
Yes. Supervisor Stopper.
Uh, thank, thank you for your leadership throughout all this, Mr. Toffinelli. Start with, uh, how much longer do we have on the contract with the current ambulance?
Well, we have, they're different ambulances. Uh, each county has their own contracts with the providers. Here in Calaveras, we are with ALA and Ebbets Pass. And we do have a contract with Copper Fire. The one with ALA, I think we have about two and a half years left on it. There, what's, three and a half years left on it. Uh, they're five-year contract with a five-year option after that. So, I believe Ebbets is the same way, three and a half years left on that, ALA three and a half. And then Copper's is the same. So, that's here. And in Amador, I think there's four years left. In Mariposa, I think there's about three years left. And Alpine uses Ebbets Pass, um, Fire District is their provider, so.
For both, for both sides?
No, just on this side, just on the west side. On the east side, it's over, they have different situation.
Different situation, okay. Thank you.
Yes, Maria.
Will there be a cost to the general fund? Because of this?
A cost from us for a general fund? We're, we're always, well, there's.
Yeah.
There used to be a cost to the general fund, but in 2008, if you remember, or 2009, we put it off onto HS states. Uh, and they pay it right now, our contribution, uh, county contribution to the JPA, which is the matching funds that we get from, um, the state and federal government. And right now, it's about $17,000, I think, for Calaveras County. Aren't with, that's all it costs for us to provide the service, uh, as a county, is, is about $17,000.
Do you think going forward, we will be paying some?
I, I had some conversations about that and able to maintain it. And that was even during, some of the conversation during, uh, the current budget in May or preliminary budget, which you haven't adopted a permanent budget yet. That'll come in September, much like we do here at the county. Um, we had that conversation about increasing, uh, any cost to the counties. And once we get our fee schedules in place and we see the amount of money we are gonna be collecting from those fees that we're gonna be, um, adding on, we'll have a better idea and adjustment whether we would have to increase any, uh, funding from the counties or not. Um, it, it's our intentions to not do that. But it may be that we have to, and, and if it is, it would be hopefully very minimal, um, as we go forward. But it's a, it's a possibility. But the costs, you have to look at the cost of the county, if the county itself had to do this service itself, which is tremendous, which is why we joined this JPA. Because it was a, a large amount of money that would have cost us.
No, thank you and the board for. No, thank you and the board for, that was a very difficult time.
It was very difficult, and it had highs and lows, and it didn't turn out the way I felt it should have, but there was a lot of different things going on, and some of it, I don't want to put anything on anybody, but some of the comments that were made, especially after this budget, was, didn't help. But anyway, Jack.
I look forward to hearing those offline. I echo what Ben and Maria said, thank you very much for leading this forward, and they asked most of my questions, and the only one thing is for constituents, there's no change in service currently in the contract, so things haven't changed for our constituents.
That's absolutely correct, and that was our intentions as a board, to make sure nothing changed going forward.
Thank you.
Other comment?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Is there any public comment?
There is one other comment.
Okay, and there's none in the room? Do we bring up? This was an informational item, so if there's no other question by the board or even staff members for Supervisor Tofanelli? CNN?
Thank you.
Even online? No hand raised? Okay, awesome. Thank you, Gary. I echo what all the other supervisors have said. I know that was an up and down for the last, last long while.
I did have a great hair when it started.
Next is item number 39, and I will turn it over to the clerk to read out.
Item number 39, an action item, and request of the board supervisors, if we have a consent to fill on various committees, divisions, dividing more in county service areas.
Okay. So we have various board committees, is there any, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to any board member that wishes to comment on any of these commission boards. Supervisor Stopper.
The Harvard Advisory Committee, Nate Burner will be great addition. I would appreciate everyone moving forward on that one. Quick question. With the Solid Waste Task Force, we have an open position for all three people. Is that, that's my question, I just want to make sure, it seems like we do. Just want to make sure that those could all be held.
Yes.
All right. I'm happy to support every person that's put an application for the Solid Waste Task Force also, and I'll, that, those are the comments I have at this time.
Okay. Okay, any other? Jack?
Just a quick question. On the Resource Conservation District, usually it comes with a recommendation from their board? They pump that to us?
I believe at this time, I was going to comment on that, thank you for bringing that up. I believe we want to continue this item, or that particularly, C and D, how do you call it? It's not an item, but the board, continue that appointment?
Yeah, so my, my understanding that it is one vacancy with two applicants, I am not aware of a recommendation from the RCD board.
I have a question.
So you, if, so if the board wanted to do so, you could certainly vote on the other appointments today and defer that.
Continue that. Yes. Can we, can we, if the board would be willing, I would request that we continue the RCD appointment to another time, and in the meantime, approve everyone else. Unless there's a comment from any board member, and then I'll move it over to public comment.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay. And with that, I'll move it over to public comment. Is there any public comment on the, not the RCD, but the current appointment that the board is looking at?
I might not be in public comment, but may I have a certified meeting to have the RCD as a particular board, or is there a question out?
I think so, yes, it might be good to get some clarity so the board is understanding what is the direction of the RCD.
You could certainly reach out and see if they have a recommendation or any comments.
Thank you. About her.
Yeah.
Okay, but there is no public comment online.
Okay, and CNN in the room, at this time, I'll bring it back to a motion to approve all the appointments and continue the RCD appointment to a later date.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Mary Pito, Solid Waste Task Force.
With that, we're on to our last item, which is supervisor announcement. I will move it to Supervisor Calaway and go down. Okay. Jack?
Just echoing again, big thank you to everybody who helped out Electrifier. Thank you.
Page two.
I have nothing to report, Madam Chair.
Stopper.
It's getting hotter.
I have two items to report, just an announcement, there will be a CSD meeting this Thursday for the Rocky Road Copper Road District, and then I just was recently on the panel with the UCC for hiring a representative for the multi-counties for green land management. So that was a very interesting, it was nice to do something new, it was to see their processes of hiring and panelists. Other than that, I don't have anything to report, other than we will close regular, and we will go into closed session and report out at the next meeting. Okay. With that, thank you, everyone. Have a good day.